Welcome everyone to today's Town of Chatham zoning board of appeals meeting. The date is November 19th, 2020. The meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly here after scheduled and on demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify us. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 23rd order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one piece. Please, not piece. This meeting of the Chatham zoning board is being conducted by a remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided in the governor's order. Anyone who would like to listen to this meeting while it's not going to do so by calling the phone number 508-454410. And then you'll have to put in the conference ID number, which is 542464689, and then hit the pound. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide a real-time access, and we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. I'll now take a roll call of all the members of the zoning board of appeals, which authorizes us to conduct this meeting in this way. So I'll first give them the name, and that person should please identify themselves. So we'll start with Dave Beach.
David H. Beach, present.
Paul C. Sample, present.
Happy?
Happy Vansickle, present.
James M. Upson, present.
Dennis Sullivan, present.
Dave Thompson.
David R. Thompson, present, sir.
Megan.
Megan Story, present.
Okay, and I am David S. Nixon, and it is my great honor to be the chairman. I'll say if there's any citizens or non-board members that wish to participate and call via the phone, they should give their name and the last four digits of their phone number for identification purposes. The meeting will be held today as we usually do, wherein the hearing notice will be read. In our situation, we are fortunate to have Sarah P. Clark. Sarah is the PPO of the town, the principal permitting officer, as well as the executive secretary for the zoning board of appeals. After it is read, then the individual who brought forth the appeal or the application or their representative will make a presentation. Following the conclusion of that, I will ask for anybody in favor of the appeal or the application who wishes to speak to do so, and you do this by indicating on your screen so that Sarah can tell you that you wish to speak. I will then read any and all letters that we have received by the board. Then I would ask for anyone who wishes to speak against the appeal or has a specific question to do so by indicating to Sarah they would like to join the conversation. Shouldn't we have anything? We might have a time for a little rebuttal. Then the board members will ask questions to anyone who has presented anything in the hearing so far. When we have heard all of that, we would then close the hearing and go into deliberation. Deliberation does not include members from the public or calling in to join in unless one of the board members wishes to include said individual. Following that, we would have a vote in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts zoning boards. It's a supermajority. That means in our case where there are five votes, the foremost vote in favor of it for you to be successful. Three votes is not a supermajority. Voting today would be Dave Beach, Paul Sample, Happy Vansickle, Buck, and myself. All votes will be taken by a roll call, so that takes a little bit of extra time. Please, please bear with us. Okay, I think we're ready to begin. So Sarah, would you please read application 20-054?
Application number 20-054, Bobby Joe Pippen Art and Randy Art, care of James M. Norcross Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 26 Harding's Beach Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 9C Block 47 Lot 1C. The applicant seeks to install a fence within a conservancy district. Proposed fencing is allowed by special permit under Section 4A 3A of the protective bylaw. The lot contains 22,422 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and Section 8D 2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw. This was continued from September 24th, 2020.
We have received a letter dated November 18th. This is from James M. Norcross. He writes, "On behalf of my clients, Randy Art and Bobby Joe Pippen Art, I am writing to request the continuance of the hearing currently scheduled for November 19th until your January 14th, 2021 meeting. The notice of intent for this project has not yet been reviewed by the conservation commission, and my clients would like to complete that process prior to the hearing with this GBA. Thank you for your consideration, and please let me know if you need any additional information." So are any board members, anybody have a question on this? Hearing non, Paul, would you make a motion, please? I presume, Sarah, that January 14th, we have room for this?
We do. This will make our...
Okay.
This is Paul Sample. I'll move to grant the continuance to January 14th, 2021.
David Beach, seconds.
Okay, then I'll take a roll call of the voting. Mr. Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous vote. That's that. Okay, Sarah, application 20-068.
Application number 20-068, Michael Earls, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 543 Old Harbor Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 16H Block 2 Lot 3. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of portions of the dwelling and construction of additions, the elevation of the existing dwelling and proposed additions on a FEMA compliant foundation, and the construction of decks and a swimming pool. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 33.9 feet from the road and is located entirely within the coastal conservancy district floodplain elevation 14. The proposed additions comply with road and abutter setback requirements, but will remain within the coastal conservancy district where a 50-foot setback is required. The proposed elevated dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 33.5 feet from the road where a 40-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 3,970 square feet, 44.6%, and the proposed building coverage is 3,824 square feet, 43% or 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and it contains 8,900 square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required, and contains 91,825 square feet where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Riley?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Bill Riley, on behalf of Kate and Mike Earls. We're joined today by Mark Sangiolo, who is the architect, and Thad Eldridge is also on the line. He's our engineer. And Kate Earls is also attending. The, I think we have a minor revision to some of the numbers that Sarah just read out. I got a revised plan, which I think was delivered to Sarah as well. It shows our proposed building coverage was 3,939 square feet. Still a reduction from the existing 4,095, but I just wanted to make that clear, that's all.
What was that number again?
Well, proposed building coverage now is 3,939 square feet, right there. That's right. Okay. Okay, so we're good. All right, wonderful.
Before you go on, Sarah, there was no problem with changing that number at the zone?
No, it's still a reduction from what had previously, what is previously on the existing site. So it's no increase in nonconformity, and the board can proceed if they wish.
Okay, very good. Okay, Mr. Riley.
All right, so the, as Sarah noted in the rather voluminous ad that was published, this property, the building that exists there was located in what is now considered a floodplain by FEMA. So the oldest portion of the building, which is the, as you look at it, the right-hand side, was actually built in sometime between 1790 and 1820. And then the bulk of the rest of the building, as it rambles along, was added in 1946, except for the very left-hand section, which was added in the 1970s. This property was owned by Alice Hiscock, who of course was on the conservation commission. And we'd just like to note that the addition was put on without going to conservation, even though that was in their jurisdiction. That's just a historical note for everybody. In any event, so the principal purpose here is they wanted to elevate the building to get it so it's above the floodplain. And so while doing that, you know, the construction of the 1946 section was not what you'd call world-class. In fact, Kate Earls told me that there's part of an automobile bumper that's in the in the supporting walls of the 1946 addition. In any event, so what they want to do is basically demolish everything to the right of the antique and build a new addition on pretty much the same footprint, although there will be a second story, second level, in the far right-hand side, the one that replaces the 1970. Yeah, thanks, Sarah. So I'd like to ask Mark Sangiolo to explain, you know, how he and Mike and Kate arrived at, you know, the design decisions that they made. Mark, are you on?
Yes, I am. Can everyone hear me?
I can certainly hear you.
Okay. Hi, thank you for having us. Yeah, so as you travel down Old Harbor, you'll notice that this site is at the low point, and the house actually sits lower than the road. So in this case, I think raising it up, just in terms of aesthetics, is going to be a lot nicer. It'll present itself a little bit better. The existing house is fairly incongruous with character. You have the antique, and then you have kind of a not very well-built middle section, and then a piece on the right, and they're kind of, you know, you have a kind of 70s character and the historic character on the left. So what we tried to do was really didn't want to go too crazy around the footprint, keep within the existing footprint as much as we could. We demoed some on the right-hand side to shorten the building up a little bit. And then on the right-hand side also, we added a one-and-a-half-story structure that'll be a master bedroom, et cetera, and kind of beefed up the middle part of the house, the entry. So it prevents, presents itself as a little more congruous, a little more delightful as you're looking at the building. And that's basically a pretty simple, simple architecture that we're trying to follow with the existing.
All right, the, did any of the board members have questions for Mr. Sangiolo?
If so, we'll ask them at question time, thank you.
Okay, so let me run through the criteria then. So adequacy of the size of the site in terms of, as of the proposed use. So the total lot area here is 91,825 square feet. The bulk of it is, is wetland, as we classify it, or I should say, not wetland necessarily, but not buildable upland, because it's either in the floodplain, or we do have some wetlands, isolated wetlands on the site. There are only about 9,300 square feet is actually buildable upland. Existing building coverage, as we noted earlier, is 4,095 square feet, and that's being reduced to the 3,939 square feet. So Mark and the Earls are basically using the existing footprint. And I think the, with the additions, it was going to be a much more attractive building. Certainly, it's been in decline now for several years, and it needs an updating. So I think that'll be, that's going to be a good thing. But anyway, so since we're not really, we're not expanding the building, and there's been a building there of this size since 1946 or '70, you know, the, I think you could clearly find that the size of the site's adequate for the proposed use. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with the neighboring properties. I did a review using the assessor's office of the properties from 459 Old Harbor Road to 592 Old Harbor Road. And the, you know, using the net area from the assessor's records, which is, as you know, is the, you know, the area that's either heated or cooled. The smallest area was 1,388 square feet, and the largest, which is directly across the street, was 5,581 square feet. And most of them, most of the numbers begin with a two. There are several threes, and then a four and a five. So I think our structure is really very much compatible in this neighborhood. It tends to be a neighborhood of generous-sized houses on generously sized lots. The extended proposed increase in nonconforming nature, principally, we're increasing the floor area mainly with the addition of a second floor on the wing on the right-hand side. So that's, and one of the things they, they did was they squared the building off to the street so that the original setback to the street was actually 33.9 feet. And by squaring it off, it's going to be 33.5 feet. So I think, you know, the increase in nonconforming nature is really very modest. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties, on the natural environment, including slopes, vegetation, wetlands, groundwater, water bodies, and stormwater runoff. As you can see from the site plan from Thad Eldridge, who's available to answer questions if we have any, you can see that we have an isolated wetland that actually drains through the property out across that purple line, Sarah, going across is the drain pipe. And then, so we have setbacks from that isolated wetland, and then we have setbacks from the coastal bank, which is across the street, and then there's another well on the other side. So what Mike and Kate, working with Mark, have done is, A, we're elevating the building to get it out of the floodplain, and then they're trying to, you know, other than using the existing footprint, you know, the, the only real addition for expansion on the ground is the pool and deck. And they've located that outside the do-not-disturb zone of the conservation commission jurisdiction. So I think the, you know, they've done a good job. I mean, elevating the building is a major project. Now, we're working with the conservation commission. Conservation commission had previously seen this under the former owner. And so, and Thad had been working with the former owner also. So I think we're in pretty good shape with the conservation commission since we had resolved some of the issues that they raised with the former owner. So I think that, you know, the site, which is low, so we're not going to create a problem for anybody else or anybody else's property. And obviously, we're going to need an order of conditions for the property. So I think you could find that this project, as approved by the conservation commission, you know, is, you know, the site's suitable for the project. You know, impact of scale, sitting in mass on a neighborhood visual character, including views, visitors, and speech apes. I think that, yes, there's a, so there's, that's the view from the street. And I think for those of you who have been down to the site, this view is considerably more attractive than the existing view because of the hodgepodge of the designs. You know, they have the 1800, 1946, and 1970, and none of which really hung together. I think Mark's done a great job, you know, keeping the windows consistent throughout and, you know, creating a real entrance in the middle of the long extension. That, you know, it's more welcoming, more effective entrance to the building. I think, and because we're low, I don't think we have any effect on anybody's views. And I think the, they say, we believe that, you know, it's a positive improvement from the speech scape, certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Compatibility of the proposed use with neighboring uses. Now, it's a single-family residence, was treated like a frat house under the prior owner. Here, the Earls are going to be using it for their vacation home, second home, for their family. And it's not going to be a rental palace like the former owners did. So we think it's compatible with neighboring uses. Method of sewage disposal, source of water, drainage. There's this, you know, there's a substantial septic system located up in the far right, left-hand corner of the property, get it outside of the floodplain. And so that's not going to change. Obviously, we're on a public water. And the drainage, which if you look at the, you have the little wetland pond there with a drainage pipe that runs underneath the house, under Old Harbor Road, out into the property across the street. So that's not going to change either, and it's been working for a long time. So we're pretty comfortable with it. Impact on traffic flow and safety. We think, if anything, there'll be a reduction in traffic from the site because Kate Earls told me that when they walked through the house, you know, when they were considering buying it, there were 23 beds on the property. So we think there'll be less traffic now. And likewise, on noise and litter, we believe that there'll be a dramatic reduction in noise. I don't know if litter was a problem before, but I'm pretty confident that noise was, and there will be. I don't know if litter was a problem before, but I'm pretty confident that noise was and, and there will be, uh, so, not, not a problem. Adequacy of utilities and other public services are clearly adequate. Uh, and so that would be our presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this point, I'd ask for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this project to, to indicate to Sarah now on the screen that you would like to speak.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor of the application.
Okay, then I will read the correspondence. The first is dated November eighteenth. It is from Callie Harper, the Conservation Agent. And she writes, in relation to the Conservation Commission, "The first hearing is scheduled for December sixteenth, twenty-twenty." Then we have a note from Michelle Clark. And she writes, and this is on November thirteenth. "The applicant was before the Historical Commission on October sixth, twenty-twenty, seeking approval for a partial demolition of the subject structure. After review of the information provided, the Commission determined that the structure is historically significant due to its age, architectural features, and association with historical persons or events of the town. Commission also found that the proposed work as presented that day will not materially diminish the historical significance of the structure, and therefore did not impose a demolition delay. The applicant is now proposing to substantially alter the plans that were accepted by the Historical Commission on October sixth. And will be making an application to the Historical Commission for approval of these changes. It is expected that the public hearing will be held on December fifteenth, twenty-twenty. As of November thirteenth, twenty-twenty, an application has not been received." And then we have a note from Judith Giorgio, the Health Agent, Town of Chatham. She writes, "On November eighteenth, I have reviewed the plan to renovate this property. Existing floor plan provided shows seven existing bedrooms. The septic plan was approved for five bedrooms. The proposed dwelling floor plan is for five bedrooms plus a room labeled 'A Bedroom' off the garage. Building code does not allow bedrooms to open into a garage. Therefore, this room cannot be considered a bedroom. If this renovation holds a total of five bedrooms, then the existing septic system is adequate. Final plans will need to be reviewed prior to construction." And that is the extent of the correspondence. If there's anyone in the audience now that wishes to either raise a question about this application or would like to speak against it, please so indicate now on the screen so that Sarah can recognize.
Uh, we have, um, Ms. Parker, or Ms. Ryan Parker and Niles Value that would like to speak. Both of them have their hands raised.
Okay, is it Ms. Parker? Is that correct?
Yes, Ms. Parker.
Okay, Ms. Parker, uh, please, we'd love to hear from you. Now.
Can you hear me all right? Because I'm not used to this one. I like Zoom, but can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I just had a question, actually, and I'm sorry, I was a couple minutes late. Did they describe the pool? Is it an above-ground pool set into a deck? Or how are they doing this? Because it's so low there. I was just curious.
Well, uh, when we get all the folks who wishes to speak, uh, we can have Mr. Riley or the architect answer that question for you. Does you want any other point you wanted to make?
Well, it was mostly that, I mean, I grew up in North Chatham, and we used to call this house Puddleby because it was just such a big puddle there. And I was just, it sounds like you're not gonna make the water worse, but it is extremely wet there and it floods there. So that's my biggest concern, is the flooding. And adding a pool, I'm curious how they're gonna do that. Okay.
Well, uh, we'll have them answer your question.
Thanks. Ms. Parker, for the record, could you please just identify your address?
Sorry, it's forty-three Hillcrest Road, North Chatham.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We also have Mr. Valu that would like to speak.
Okay, uh, are you there, Sarah?
I, I am here, Mr. Volley.
Okay, Mr. Volley, uh, the floor is yours.
Great. Good afternoon. Hello, Mr. Chairman, hello, everyone. Um, my name's Neilz Volley. I'm in a butter at, uh, at five twenty-nine Old Harbor. And I believe my mother is also on the call today.
I am, but I can't change it.
Okay. All right, um, so, like other neighbors, we're definitely happy to have five forty-three be, be owner occupied and not a rental unit as it was previously. Um, and, and we're happy that the historical building on our property is gonna be, be kept. Um, and I just, I have some questions, I guess, about, um, just about the plan. Um, I see that the, the construction and the swimming pool are gonna be a short distance from a wetland pond that's on the property. Uh, and to give a little context, I heard it described as a isolated wetland. And I think, um, to give a little context, if you look at the building plan um, for five forty-three Old Harbor, to the west of that wetland is a pond, uh, to the west of that wetland pond is a stream that runs to a wetland on our property at five twenty-nine Old Harbor. And then further west of that on our property is a, a water course that runs slightly up a hill to a, to a small wetland marsh. And then, uh, as been, as has been mentioned, when you look back at the building plan, to the east of the wetland pond, there's that, that head wall that leads to a drainage pipe that runs under the building and then under Old Harbor Road to the wetland across the street toward the beach. Um, and so I just mentioned this to underline that this is, this, this wetland is part of a larger system of wetland areas, uh, you know, a chain. And, um, and having lived here for a long time, we, you know, there, these areas are habitat to frogs and box turtles, even snapping turtles, uh, deer, foxes, raccoons, you know, coyotes, turkeys, lots of, lots of birds. So I definitely have a concern about the impact of this construction that it would, that, that would, could it potentially have an impact on the, on these wetlands and the plant and the, and the, and the wildlife that use it as habitat? And that's not to necessarily speak against it, just a concern. Um, as, uh, Ms. Parker mentioned, this is a, I mean, the whole area is very wet. Um, and, um, and I wonder about, you know, having a pool there especially. Um, and I, I don't know of any other pools in North Chatham that are on floodplains that are next to or on a wetland. Um, could be wrong about that, but, um, I don't know how, and I, and I'd also be curious about the, you know, how is this pool? Yeah, what's the, what's the plan in terms of, um, is it a, is it a regular chlorinated pool? Or I'm not an expert in pool construction, but, um, uh, and then questions about the, the, um, if there's gonna be any trees or, or visual barriers around the pool. Uh, lighting around the pool is, is, um, I can imagine a situation where someone will wanna have it be a place you would swim at night. So does that mean there's gonna be lights there? Um, and then, and then if they need to drain the pool, how is the pool gonna drain? Um, I know you don't have to drain a pool very often, but, uh, yeah, so just questions about the sort of, about the environmental impact and then just the, the, the pool itself, how it's being constructed and the, and the visual barriers or sound barriers. Um, particularly the sound, because, I, I, Ms. Parker can speak to this too. Sound really, really travels down there because we're at the bottom of the hill. It's like a bull. So, you know, uh, we can hear, we can hear conversations uh, that are a long way off at properties because the, the sound really, um, echoes down there. Uh, yeah, and I think that's it.
Okay, did your mom want to speak also?
Uh, maybe, I don't know.
I, I would, I would like to, can you hear me? I'm on, I'm in my car on an iPhone.
Uh-huh, I see, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, could you identify yourself, please?
Yeah, I'm, I'm Rosamund Volley. It's Volley, not Value. And, um, that was my son speaking. I'm from, I own five twenty-nine Old Harbor Row, which is directly behind, um, the property five forty-three, five, five forty-five. And, um, I, um, I, I do agree that it's great to think it's gonna be a single-family home, um, enjoyed by a family. Um, I've been, um, mindful of the fact that Old Harbor Road in North Chatham has done a pretty good job of keeping houses to scale and, um, and the, the older houses along the road and restoring them. And so, um, I'm hoping the materials and the look, uh, will be compatible with that. One exception is the house directly across the street, which is a great big house that dominates the Cow Yard Town Landing. Um, uh, my son's spoken about the pool. Um, I, I understand, um, we're kind of low back behind the house. I don't think they see us. And to date, we don't see them. Um, but I am concerned, as it rises up four feet or more, that, um, that won't, will no longer be the case. And I understand that, that it has to be raised in order to, uh, in order to use the house, uh, in a floodplain. But, um, I'm, I'm just, um, I, I, that's a concern that we're going to be looking into a portion of that new structure particularly. Um, and, um, hoping that our, our view through the, the front lawn of that house between our driveway and, um, and the, and the old house, uh, at five forty-three, that that, uh, is also, remains open so that we get our little taste of, uh, of looking toward the water. Um, the previous owners, um, put in some trees that were, um, not, not the best selection along the driveway. Um, and I, so landscaping is also an issue. Um, not that I'm a landscape fanatic, but, um, whatever, whatever goes in, I hope can be appropriate and is sensitive to the houses around it and our house behind it. So that, that I think is, is my, uh, take. And, um, I thank you for letting me speak.
Well, I thank you for coming on. Sarah, was there anyone else who wished to speak against or had a specific question?
I'm not seeing anyone additional that wishes to speak.
Okay, so Mr. Riley, uh, would you like to, uh, handle answering the questions from these three folks?
Sure.
Yeah, the floor is yours.
All right, so with regard to the pool, I'd ask, uh, Mark Sangiolo to explain, uh, the pool construction.
Right. Yeah, um, well, I'm not a pool expert either, but this pool is basically an above-ground pool. It might be set into the ground a foot or so. We have to stay above the water table, but it's built into a deck. And it'll have screening around it. And then I, I'm not showing any planting on my drawings, but we do have a landscape architect that has done a planting plan for the Conservation Commission. There'll be, um, shrubbery and planting around it as well. As far as draining it, I'm not really sure. I mean, um, it, like somebody mentioned, it doesn't have to be done often. I imagine it would be done slower than a typical pool if they ever had to drain it and be monitored through the, um, the, uh, outfall that goes to the well end.
Well, the, uh, typically, the Conservation Commission requires, uh, like a dry well or something, you can, you can put the water in. But that's something we'll go have to deal with the Conservation Commission on.
If I may, Thad Eldridge here, the Conservation typically requires that the, the, the pool be drained into a truck and taken off-site.
Yeah, that, that or a dry well, but that, yeah. Uh, it's unlikely that the pool will actually be completely drained, uh, except under very rare circumstances. And, uh, I believe, uh, and Mark can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, that it's gonna be a, a gunite pool. Is that correct, Mark?
Uh, I'm not, we're not exactly sure what the construction is yet. I know that, um, uh, the owners are, are talking to a couple of pool companies, and there's a couple of options on the table.
Yeah, well, it's, it's gunite or something similar. Um, uh, we've been involved in a couple of pools that were constructed in, in flood zones in the, uh, basically, uh, here, of course, uh, you're gonna have to dig in a little bit, but we have gunite pools that are just resting on the ground. Uh, uh, so it's a, it's a system that works. You put, you build a deck around it and it's, uh, but, yeah, and this pool won't be, won't be anywhere as much out of the ground as, as those others, so.
Hi, do you want me to clarify? This is Kate Earls.
Yeah, that'd be great, Kate.
Yeah, it, it is, it is gonna be gunite. Um, I think the, um, consideration for steel pools was that it could potentially float. So we're going with gunite. Um, and it will be up out of the ground, probably about five feet.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you, thank you very much, Kate.
Sure.
Terms of, in terms of lighting, yes, there will be lighting around the pool. Uh, uh, but, uh, you know, I don't know if Kate or Mike, uh, Mark have given any thought to it, but, you know, the, uh, but it's just gonna be.
I, I actually have given, uh, a bit of thought to it. And, um, and I did speak with mosquito control. Um, my thoughts are probably, and, um, the Volleys can probably, um, vouch for this, that there are quite a few mosquitoes once the sun goes down because of the wetlands. And, um, I would say probably that's going to keep swimming at night, um, to a minimum.
And, um, this is Mark Sangiolo. The other thing we could do that we've done in some other projects too is, um, do all like downlighting, so it's not shining up in the air everywhere.
Definitely.
Okay, um, I, I think, uh, you know, most of, uh, Mr. Volley's concerns really are, are gonna be addressed through the Conservation Commission. Um, you know, the pool is, uh, as, as the board knows, Conservation has a, a, a no disturbs zone, uh, in the area of the first fifty feet away from a wetland. And the pool is outside of that, as you can see on our site plan. So we, we believe that, uh, you know, uh, the Earls have been properly respectful of the regulations of the Conservation Commission.
I just wanted to do talk a little bit about the landscape plan. Is there, is there a plan in place now, or is it just something that's under consideration?
No, we do have a plan.
And does it in, in any way affect the neighborhood spoke about?
Um, no, it, it doesn't because they're, they're not planning on, you know, planting enormous trees in a block of Volley's view. Uh, so the, uh, it's mostly, um, plants around the building. You know, uh, station plantings and, and, uh, um, uh, light screening plantings around the pool itself, you know, immediately adjacent to the pool. Um, you know, but that, you know, that's, uh, so no extensive large-size plantings are planned.
Okay, uh, thank you. I think we'll now go on to have questions from the board. Uh, we'll start with Dave Beach.
I have no question, Dave Beach, I have no questions at this point, Dave. Something might come up, so I'll let you know. Thanks.
Okay, Paul, any questions?
Uh, this is Paul Semple. I, uh, uh, one question I had is, is I look at the design of the house from the road. Um, it almost looks a little out of balance, given that the new construction of where the garage is and so forth is much larger than the existing, uh, old construction on the left-hand side. Um, I realized that what happened here, I think, is that this gradually increased, like a lot of properties in New England do, by adding an L and adding an L and another this and that. I wonder if any consideration was given to consolidating the design so that it, the newer portion was closer to the older portion and it was less dragged out to the right-hand side. It looks odd to have your entrance, uh, sort of in the middle of the, of the L from the road and have it be the smallest feature from that side.
Well, I, the, uh, I'll ask, I'll ask Mark to address that, but I can tell you that the, the concept here, Paul, is that traditionally, uh, when, uh, a lot of these structures were built, there'd be a barn at the end of the connector. structures were built, there'd be a barn at the end of the connector. And so the, the, uh, the idea here was that, uh, and, and this was something that was embraced by the Historical Commission, is that, uh, the, uh, you want to keep, uh, the antique, most, you know, the oldest portion, make it clearly identifiable and not lose its identity. Uh, and the, and so the, the idea was to mimic the idea of, you know, the house on, on the left-hand side and the barn as far away, uh, on the right-hand side. That was the concept, uh, that was used and the, uh, I can tell you the Historical Commission was very, very enthusiastic about this design. Uh, but Mark, if you want to explain it better than that?
Uh, sure. And that, that's really, uh, it was designed as kind of big house, back house, little house, barn situation. Um, we didn't want to, we, we were constricted by the footprint and the, um, petiteness of the existing house and trying to get spaces on the second floor. So anything that kind of get too, got too close to it, the spaces just didn't really work for us. So, uh, that's how, that's what the concept was and we did try to keep the, even though the entry is small, we wanted to try to keep it, uh, as a kind of a small, um, uh, columns like the existing federal character of the existing house without doing something too, you know, big round columns and a big ediment, et cetera. Want to keep it kind of low-key.
All right. Well, I can understand the, the concepts there. Um, had our, had our prior hearing on this, uh, property, uh, when it was owned by Tacoma, uh, there was a lot of concern about the, uh, pool and the location of the pool, um, and its use during the summertime. I, I realize that the fact that there's going to be a single family owning the property, using it, there'll be a great deal of improvement over what was prior there. But, um, a lot of the questions, uh, that the neighbors had and that we had, it seemed to me, are going to be addressed by the Conservation Commission, either in terms of lighting or landscaping or, uh, height, uh, of the pool and, uh, the surrounding vegetation. And I'm still wondering, as I was at the time of the Tacoma Properties application, whether it makes more sense for us to look at this after Conservation has acted on it so that we know what we're dealing with on a final basis and the neighbors do as well. Um, I realize we don't have to do that because we can act anyhow, but I'm not sure that's the most advisable way.
If I could respond to that, Mr. Chairman, the, uh... Hello?
Yeah.
Uh, so the, uh, the reason we believe that it, it's appropriate for you to act, uh, before the Conservation Commission acts, uh, is that, uh, from the Conservation Commission's point of view, uh, we've actually, uh, we, we've reduced the size of the footprint, uh, it's within the, uh, zero to 50. If you, you see there's a, there's a, there's a, a line that goes through the, uh, the right-hand side of the building and curves around, uh, right next to the, uh, swimming pool. Uh, yeah, that, yeah, see that? So that line, um, plus I can't make a, there it is right there. So the one that goes by, yeah, yeah, it goes by the pool and then goes through the building. See, so we've reduced the area inside the zero to 50 and, and that's, uh, always very important, uh, to the Conservation Commission. And, uh, we're not moving any, anything any closer, uh, to that wetland, uh, than the existing structure. So we have a net reduction, uh, so we, we think that the Conservation Commission is, you know, is going to approve this, uh, in its current form. You know, there'll be conditions imposed relative to construction, of course, uh, and, uh, as Paul indicated, you know, uh, they'll deal with lighting, uh, although, uh, I think the mosquito thing is probably more effective than anything else in keeping the lighting down. And the, uh, uh, and they'll deal with the, uh, the planting plan, which we've proposed, all, all native vegetation, of course, uh, and mostly low-growing. Um, and of course, the, the huge benefit here to the wetland, uh, is the fact that the building's being elevated. So, uh, so that the, as, as we know, it, when, when you elevate a building out of the floodplain, you reduce the possibility of damage to the building, uh, that would cause further damage, uh, to the wetland areas around it. So, uh, you know, it's, it's really a, a net benefit, uh, to the, um, Conservation Commission.
Yeah.
And, and the, the, and we're going to be doing, you know, what they call mitigation planting as well so that, uh, that increases the net benefit. So, uh, for those reasons, we think it's appropriate for you to act today.
Paul, did you have any other questions?
I do not have any other questions.
Happy, do you have questions?
I actually don't have any questions. I have a couple of things, concerns. I, first of all, I lived in North Chatham for 35 years and I'm very familiar with what we used to call Sneakers Hiscock House, and I think it's tremendous effort that they're doing and I applaud them for doing what they're doing and making it as it always has been. It's an absolute treasure for North Chatham. I'm in, my only concern is swimming pool. I grew up with a swimming pool and I know they need to be drained and I know, um, they can create a lot of noise. So I'm assuming, I'm hoping and assuming that the Conservation will, will be very dutiful in, in accepting whatever plans they have to do because, um, pools could be a, a, an attractive nuisance, I think, as you would say that, David, in your insurance world. Um, and it's sometimes difficult for neighbors, so, um, I just am concerned about the pool, but I think as far as the house and the design of the house, I think it's fabulous. So that would be my only concern is the pool.
Buck, you have any questions?
Buck has no questions.
Dennis.
Um, yes, Dennis. So I just have one question. What's the difference in elevation between the street and the, um, the front entry porch? I'm just trying to see what this is going to look like standing on the street looking at the house.
I think, this is Mark Sangiolo.
Wait, wait, wait. We, we have Thad here with...
Okay.
The engineering. So Thad, why don't you respond to that?
Hi. So the adjacent grade outside of the porch is nine. Uh, the proposed first floor is at 15-1, so we're going to have a six-foot difference in there. Uh, that's going to be diminished. They're adding the, the two feet of landscape material against the foundation for the bylaw.
And the, and there's a benchmark, uh, Dennis, uh, out in the street, the elevation, uh...
Nine as well.
Nine as well, right.
Okay. So it's going to be more or less even with the street then?
Right.
Okay. Um, I just had one other question, um, probably not that pertinent, but how, how often does this house actually flood?
I'm not aware that it's ever flooded.
Oh, okay. I was just concerned, I think. I di- I didn't think that the water came down caveat into the lot, but I wasn't sure.
Uh, the...
No, my ears, it's never flooded.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
You know, the, it's, they call it puddleby because, because it's in a, it's a wetland, not because it's in a floodplain.
Right.
And the floodplain is a recent arrival here, relatively speaking.
Thank you.
Your, your federal government at work.
Uh, any other questions, Dennis?
No, no, that was it. Thank you.
Okay. Dave Thompson, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, Mr. Nixon.
Megan, how about yourself?
I have no questions.
Okay. And I have none. So Paul, can I have a motion, please?
This is Paul Simple. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Beach, seconds.
Okay. How do you vote on that, Mr. Beach?
Uh, Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Simple votes yes.
Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. The deliberations, I think, I'll start with Paul because I think, Paul, you were indicating to us that you would rather see us, uh, have this deferred until after Conservation. Am I correct?
Uh, that was my, uh, that was my impression. This is Paul Simple. That was my impression because, as I say, a great deal of the current questions that we have here revolve around how this is going to actually finally work. Um, and, um, as I understand it, what, what's being said in part is that there's going to be some, uh, foundation plantings. Uh, most of the stuff is going to be low. The pool is going to be five feet apparently, uh, above ground. And, um, and, uh, maybe I'm wrong on that, but that was sort of my impression. And I'm, I'm a little confused about exactly how this is all going to look, uh, when it's done. Um, and I think that's of some concern. The, uh, the wetlands that are there, I mean, we've certainly heard from a number of people this gets extremely wet, probably especially in the springtime. So all of these are conservation issues that need to be resolved by Conservation and could affect how we condition the, the potential approval. Um, my questions concerning the design, uh, have been answered and, uh, I understand where that's coming from, so, uh, I don't think I have any further questions there.
Okay. Uh, Happy, deliberations, how do you feel about this project?
Well, I think it's fantastic that they're taking this on, but I agree with Paul. I hate to have them delay it, but I think we need to know more from Conservation exactly how the pool's going to be treated, how the plantings are going to be done. It's the most beautiful field of daffodils ever. So I'm kind of concerned that the, uh, of what the Conservation's going to come up with, so that's my only concern.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Bill Riley, you know, that's a four-month delay because of the way the Conservation Commission been treating cases. So it's not fair.
No, December 16th.
No, that's the first meeting. That's the first meeting. We won't be finished with this until after, until sometime in January and then they'll write the order on the first meeting in February. It's ridiculous.
Well, okay. Uh, Buck, deliberations.
Boy, did you give me the mic just in time.
I did.
I wholly support what, uh, Paul Simple, um, was saying. I listened to all these questions from the abutter and I've always felt, and I think I say this from experience, um, ZBA should wait until the Conservation Commission has made their final decision. I don't like doing it out of order. Uh, but, that being said, if we're going to vote tonight, if we are, I would support it, but I'd rather not.
Okay. Dennis?
Um, yeah, I, I have the same concern. That's why I raised the issue about what this is going to look like from the street and I, I still have, um, some reservations, how, how the pool is going to look. Um, so, um, you know, I, I know that, I think other members of the committee disagree with my version of what, what, what we should be doing as, as far as Conservation because I think, I think Conservation is supposed to issue a, issue an order before, or at least have, have some identification from Conservation that they will issue an order before we actually vote on it. So, um, I'm more inclined to rely on, on what Paul said and, um, unfortunately push it over. Thank you.
Dave Thompson?
Um, sorry, Mr. Nixon, this is, uh, Sarah Clark. Um, we cannot dictate the order in which anyone appears before the land use regulatory boards. I just wanted to put that out there for all the members so they are aware.
Thank you. Uh, Dave Thompson, deliberations?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Nixon. I'm looking at the, the, uh, uh, plan, um, as, as to what we're going to see from the road and I see a very nice, uh, broken-back saw box, which looks fantastic. It's the old house. Um, it's an improvement. Um, it's a positive addition, um, that, that they're doing here. I wish it was in my neighborhood. I've said that before about homes. Um, you can't see the pool from the front. I think it looks great. If I was voting, which unfortunately I'm not, I, I would vote in favor. Thank you.
Megan?
Sorry, mute. I too, uh, would vote in favor if I were voting. I think it's, uh, that they have paid as much homage as they can to building it in conjunction and in congruence with the original house, which was my largest sort of concern with it. Um, while I understand what people are saying about the pool, I think that that is, you know, if, it sounds like they've done what they can, um, and so I would vote for it if I were voting.
Okay. Uh, Dave Beach?
Um, yeah, well, I, um, I definitely think that I like the design. I like what they've done. I think it's, um, it's, it's a real improvement over what's there. Um, I'm inclined to support it. Um, as far as the timing goes, I understand what the fellow members have said with respect to Conservation Commission's, um, conditions and things like that, which do seem to come into play with respect to concerns that the neighbors have raised. Um, at the same time, um, you know, I think, I, I don't know exactly where we stand with this, but it seems like, um, the, the situation that we're in, find us as in the Conservation Commission, things get drawn out more than they perhaps previously were. Um, so all of that said, uh, and also I just want to point out, Dennis, um, you know, with your question, that I'm, the way I'm seeing things, the question about, um, elevation of the building with respect to the road and the answers that you got, and they were talking about a benchmark of about 8.9 feet near the road. Well, if the road there is about elevation nine, well, that, that's, the, the building will be about, uh, the top of foundation will be about five feet higher than that, the new foundation. So it's not, uh, at the same height as the road. Um, and anyway, that's just something I noticed in the conversation back and forth. So I would say, it's, also the consideration of the, the Historical Commission, I guess there's some changes that they want to address, but I, in this case, I would be comfortable going forward and supporting this and, uh, if CONSCOM changes things or, or, um, Historical Commission changes things, then they have to come back to us. I, I, in this case, I think we can take it out of order, uh, and, and, and be fine. Thanks.
Okay. So there's, uh, definitely a difference of opinion here, um, as to whether we should ask Mr. Riley to continue it or that we should go ahead and vote. So...
Mr. Nixon, hey, can I address that for just a minute?
Okay.
The, uh, as, as, uh, as Dave Beach just pointed out, uh, you know, we can't do anything without an order of conditions. And, you know, we wouldn't be pushing like this, uh, if we thought there was a significant likelihood that this design is going to change at all. Uh, I would also point out, uh, no disrespect intended, of course, but the pool really isn't, I mean, we show it because we want you, we want to show you everything we want to do, but it's really not part of the application. I mean, we, we could build a pool anytime, you know, assuming the Conservation Commission gave us, gave us permission. So, uh, my request would be that, uh, you know, if, if, if you, the board members feel that the design, uh, is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, uh, then the risk, uh, that the Conservation Commission is going to do something that makes us change the design, that's on us. So if we willingly accept it, and so I'd ask you to reconsider, uh, that concern if, if the design is approvable, you know, if you like the design and you agree it's not substantially more detrimental, let us take the risk that the Conservation Commission is going to do something that makes us change our design.
Okay. I, I agree. It's, this is Happy.
Yeah. Uh, if I might add to what Mr. Riley just said, uh, if there is, if, let's say this was approved the way it is tonight, if there was... approved the way it is tonight, if there was any change, they'd have to come back for a modification in front of us anyway. So I don't think that...
Okay, got it, got it.
Should be. So I think what we need to decide here is, is there a super majority that wishes to go ahead and vote on the application the way it is without the final words from conservation, without the final words from historical? That's what I'm going to ask each of the voters to answer. So, Mr. Beach, do I get the idea you would say yes to that?
Yes, that's correct, Dave.
Okay. Paul Semple?
Yeah, I understand the arguments that are being made on all sides here. I do think in this instance that how this is dealt with by conservation and the presentation of the landscaping and so forth are of significance. I am a little upset that we end up dealing with these projects before conservation has acted, when perhaps it's because their schedule was so drawn out that we become the bad guys, which I do not like to be. So I will rely on the fact that it's necessary for them to come back with any changes to the plan, and will reluctantly vote in favor of the application.
Happy?
I'm in favor of the application. This is happy.
Buck?
I'll support it.
And I will too. So Paul, if you would make a formal motion, please.
Yep, this is Paul Semple. I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
David Beach seconds.
Okay, before we vote, the question of conditions. Does anybody feel like there needs to be anything conditioned now? I noticed there was an awful lot of activity already going on when I was down there, but does anybody, is anybody concerned about conditioning this now?
This is Paul Semple. I don't think there's a need for conditions other than our normal conditions with respect to equipment and so forth off of the road and the schedule of construction.
Okay, so let's be very specific about those conditions. Sarah, would you please read those?
So the first condition would be all construction activity and vehicles to be contained on site between June 30th and Labor Day. No exterior construction will be allowed. No work shall be permitted on weekends, and construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think because of, I understand the summer site construction condition in congested areas, hardly what I would consider a congested area, and the , we'd like commission to have outside construction in the summer months. We have no objection to the weekend limitation, or the condition requiring everything to be kept on the property.
Okay, Mr. Riley, I've heard that. So let's go back to, we'll go back to you, Dave Beach. So the question here is, do you feel the conditions should be as we, as Sarah read them, or are you willing to change them for Mr. Riley?
Um, Dave, I'm willing to change them for Mr. Riley because I do agree this is not a really congested area. And I think that exterior construction, as long as they maintain the vehicles, et cetera, on the property, I think construction can take place here without being incredibly disruptive to the neighborhood.
Okay. Paul? Paul?
This is Paul Semple. I'll go along with that agreement as well.
Okay, happy?
Yes, I will.
Buck?
Only because it's Mr. Riley will I go along with it.
Okay, all right. So I think Paul has made a motion and asked to approve this as was presented with the condition and the change in it as Sarah read it, and then as we heard from Mr. Riley. Mr. Beach, would you second Paul?
David Beach seconds that motion.
Okay, so then voting. Mr. Beach, how do you vote?
Uh, Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Double votes yes.
Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous decision, Mr. Riley. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and the board members.
Okay.
Nobody's seen the cow yard in the summer.
Who is interrupting us? Who is that?
That was Roseman Volley. I'm sorry.
Please, please. It's very difficult to have hearings the way it is. Interruptions, please. Okay, Sarah, may we go on to 20-069?
Yes, I would remind any, anyone in the audience wishing to be part of this meeting, please remember to mute yourself while you're not speaking. Same thing with applicants, just out of consideration for the board members. Application number 20-069 Highland Realty Trust, care of George Riley, 63 Brook Trail Road, Brewster, Mass. 02631. Owner of property located at 107 Highland Avenue, also shown on the Town of Chatham Assessor's map 15E block 55, lot 48. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a nonconforming garage/guest house on a nonconforming lot via the demolition of the existing structure and the construction of a new garage/guest house. The existing structure is nonconforming, and it is located five feet from the northern abutter. The proposed garage/guest house will be nonconforming, and that it will be located eight feet from the northern abutter, where a 15-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 2,378 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,296 square feet, or 2,900 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is nonconforming, and it contains 99.09 feet of frontage, or 100 feet is required. The lot contains 24,049 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Do we have Mr. George Riley with us?
Yes, this is George Riley. I'm here representing Highland Realty Trust, and I'm with Tim Brady from East Cape Engineering.
Okay, well, the floor is yours.
Yes. Well, the clients, they wanted to rebuild this garage with an apartment above, and as been stated, it's nonconforming because it's close to that property line of five feet, where 15 feet is required. They'd like to rebuild in approximately the same place, but move it further away from the property line to eight feet. The, it's nonconforming in that there's a second dwelling on a lot of 24,000, I don't know, 49 square feet, where 40,000 feet is required. The new garage will have a similar apartment above, and be approximately the same size as the existing garage apartment. The building coverage will be slightly less because we're taking down the existing shed, so the overall coverage will be reduced by 169 square feet, so that there's a 9.5% coverage. And there's be no change in the utilities. The utilities will be the same as they are in the existing, the existing garage, gas, sewage, electricity, et cetera. And the, shall I go through the criteria?
Yes, please.
Yes, well, so we think this site is adequate for this structure. It's approximately the same as the existing structure that's already there, and the coverage will be reduced from 9.8 to 9.5%. We think it's compatible with the neighborhood. It's approximately the same size as the existing building, and it's compatible with the other buildings on Highland Avenue. Proposed increase in the nonconforming nature of the structure, well, it's improved in that it's eight feet from the property line rather than five feet from the property line, and the, otherwise, everything will be the same. Suitable impact in neighborhood properties and natural environment, I, there's no real change in that, as well as the impact of scale, siding, mass, et cetera. Let's see, sewage disposal will be exactly the same. It's the same amount of capacity, compatible with the neighborhood, no impact on traffic flow, noise, litter. Adequate utilities will be the same. It's not located in the floodplain, and the visual impact on the neighborhood will be unchanged. So anyway, that's, that's the situation.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate to Sarah now that you would like to speak.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor of the application.
Okay, then I will read the correspondence. On 11/18, Judith Giorgio, the health agent, wrote, "I have reviewed the proposed plan for this property. The plan to demo and rebuild the garage/guest house does not appear to add sewer flow to the property. The septic system was designed and approved for a three-bedroom main house and a two-bedroom guest house. I have no concerns." And that's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either against this, or has a specific question? If so, please indicate to Sarah now.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay, so questions from the board. Happy?
Excuse me, I have to unmute. I have no questions.
Buck?
Buck has no questions.
Dennis?
Uh, Dennis Sullivan had no questions.
Dave Thompson?
Uh, Dave Thompson has no questions.
Megan?
Megan has no questions.
Dave Beach?
Uh, Dave Beach has no questions.
Uh, this is Paul Semple. In looking at the Scheme A front elevation, I was just curious. We have some doors that are marked seven on that. Are those doors, what are they intended to do?
Sorry, couldn't hear you.
Ask him again.
Could you repeat that? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yes, on the Scheme A front elevation, there are some doors that are marked number seven on each side of the garage door. What are those intended to do?
Um, I think they're just a decorative element, as far as I know.
Yeah, I believe, this is Tim Brady from East Cape Engineering, and I believe those are just decorative doors. They may slide over the garage door. I'm not sure, but they're not access to the building.
Right, they're labeled custom sliding door panels with a rolling track, two per size, but they don't look big enough to do, to do the garage, and they don't enter the building at all.
You're correct.
Yeah. All right, I guess I don't have any other questions.
Uh, well, okay. So Paul, how about a motion?
Yeah, move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
Uh, David Beach seconds.
Okay, need a vote on that? Mr. Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Double votes yes.
Happy? Was that a yes, happy? I'll take that as a yes.
Happy votes yes.
Buck votes yes.
Okay, and I vote yes. Okay, deliberations. Let's start with Buck.
Well, I have concerns about the project. I just, I just got some, some instinct that I'm not sure I can support it. Do I have to elaborate on that?
Well, it would be good for the record, because the decision letter to the judge, we need to give him some reason.
Yes, we need specific reasons based on the criteria as to why you wouldn't support the application.
So when I look at 5B, the comment that I found most interesting was that our 10 points in the criteria are at a minimum, and that was in the final sentence before they listed. So you could consider other criteria outside of those 10 points. And my concern is the, it gets along to what Paul was referring to, the way they've put the front, the front of this house, just looking at it. I'm not sure that, I'm not exactly sure what the exact words are, but I'm just, I'm not comfortable with the fact that it fits in the neighborhood.
Well, Buck, when you're considering this, is it substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists? So if you compare what they wish to do with what is there now, do you still feel it is substantially more detrimental?
I'm prepared to say I feel it's substantially more detrimental.
Okay, Dennis?
Dennis Sullivan, I think it's a nice little project. I certainly don't think it's more detrimental. I think it's an enhancement to the neighborhood. And if I were voting, which I'm not, but if I were, I would certainly vote in favor of it. I think it meets all our standards.
Dave Thompson?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Looking at what's there, and seeing what they would like to do, it's such an improvement, a great improvement. I would support it 100%. Thank you for asking me.
Okay, Megan?
I think it's a substantial improvement. I like the project. I can completely see myself putting what have been described as useless doors on the side for aesthetic reasons. So I fully support the project, and I think it's nice.
Dave Beach?
Um, yes, certainly. I think it's an improvement as far as the zoning regulations are concerned, of moving it further away from the sideline aesthetically. Well, I think we have room to have some decorative doors. I don't think that, can't object based, wouldn't object based on that. I think it is, it's not substantially more detrimental than what's there. I do think it's an improvement. It meets our other criteria. I will support it.
Paul?
Yes, this is Paul Semple. I agree that it's certainly not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, based on our criteria. The doors confuse me, and they still confuse me, but that's, that's the way it goes. So I will vote in favor.
Happy?
I agree. This is happy. I agree with my gentlemen friends. I definitely would support it.
Okay, and I would support it because I do not feel what they wish to do is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. So, Paul, may we have a motion, please? Well, anybody wish to comment on conditions?
Well, this is Paul Semple. I guess I would say this is a more congested area. So I think they can get all their vehicles off the road there, although there were vehicles on the road when I was there looking at it. I think they're probably landscaper types, but I'm not sure. In any case, I think probably our standard conditions make more sense in this situation than they did on Old Harbor Road.
Does anyone on the board disagree with Paul's theory? All right, so Paul, would you make a motion, please?
Yes, I'll move to approve the patient as submitted, subject to the conditions, the standard conditions which we would impose on the construction.
Okay.
Uh, David Beach seconds.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant does have his hand raised at the moment.
Well, I don't think this is the appropriate time. They've had plenty of opportunity, but Mr. Riley, yes?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't allow this sort of interruption, so what is it?
This is Tim Brady. And my only comment was relative to your standard conditions. Do those include limiting construction on the exterior from June until October?
That is correct.
Oh, it's June 30th until Labor Day.
I think that's a little stiff for this site. This is a project that's well removed from the street. It's a relatively small project. This is not a large building. As was mentioned, there's room to get equipment and materials off of the street. So it just seemed like that restriction in my mind is probably really not necessary in this point. There are, I've been to that site a number of times. There are landscapers at all of the sites in this area that are in the street. But that's not necessarily relative to construction for this site. So I would just ask that that not be one of your regular conditions.
Okay, so let's go back to the top. Mr. Veech, how do you feel about conditions?
Well, excuse me, I certainly see, I see all the sides of it. And I don't know that comparing construction activity to landscape activity is going to get us anywhere, really. I, it is a pretty, it is certainly a more congested neighborhood. I actually could go either way. I could support the, all vehicles and activity contained to the site. And I could, I can go either way with respect to the exterior summer construction.
Paul?
This is Paul Sample. I would still stick with the standard conditions given the congested area. It's a busy street and it's a cut-through street going across from the church area over towards seaside. So I would leave them in place.
Okay, Harry, Happy?
I agree with keeping the standard conditions.
Buck?
Since I'm voting no on it, I think I should at least say it if you're going to approve it, that his request should be honored.
Okay, and I agree with Paul and Happy. And Mr. Veech is on the fence. But I believe we should go with our standard conditions. It's a very congested area. And I don't see why they can't work within that.
Speaking of Sunday morning.
Well, hopefully, they won't be working on Sunday morning. Anyway, so Paul has made a motion. He made the motion to approve this with the standard conditions. Mr. Veech seconded that. We will now vote on that with the standard conditions. Paul, why don't you start the voting?
This is Paul Sample. I'll vote yes.
Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
No.
I vote yes. So, Mr. Veech?
And Veech votes yes.
Okay, so it passes four to one with the standard conditions. Thank you all very much and thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to 20-070.
Application number 20-070, Hydrangea Properties LLC, care of William F. Friley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 63 Cross Street, also showed on the Town of Chatham Assessment Map 15D Block 95 Lot 67. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a conforming lot via the construction of additions. The existing dwelling and proposed additions conform to Rodin and Butter setback requirements. The existing building coverage is 3,358 square feet. And the proposed building coverage is 4,377 square feet, or 2,900 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 22,639 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master General Law Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Okay, Mr. Riley?
Good afternoon, Bill Riley on behalf of Hydrangea Properties. Eric Tully, who is the architect, is on the line. And the owner of the property, Sean Campbell, is listening as well. As you can see, those of you who are familiar with the Cyrus Kent House, it's a substantial building, built a long time ago. We went, they went to the Historic Commission. You should have a letter raving in support. They had a very good meeting with them. The purpose of the changes here are to add a mudroom with an entrance that faces Cross Street. And then it's really a series of porches. So there would be a porch across the front that matches the existing porch on the Kent Place side. There's a screen porch on the backside. And then a porch over the entry of the building, the main entry of the building facing Kent Place. So very modest changes. And I'd like to ask Eric Tully to explain them, how he and the Campbell family came to those decisions. Eric?
Thank you very much, Bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen of the board. Just to recap what Attorney Riley has outlined for you, we did receive unanimous support for the project on Tuesday. Some other highlights, the existing inn is going to go away. And the property will now become a single-family dwelling. There'll be a reduction in bedroom count from 11 to nine. And of the proposed square footage increases, the habitable space, two small additions, very modest totaling 209 square feet. Two screen porches totaling 345 square feet. And an extension of the existing northern covered porch wrapped around to the western side. And those porches totaled 225 square feet. My client looks forward to revitalizing this historic property and restoring it to some of its older grandeur. As I'm sure that those of you who went to the site saw, it is in significant disrepair at this point. And we look forward to working with you and your board to restore this property. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, happy to run through the criteria to the extent that they apply here.
Yeah, very good. Go ahead.
So adequacy to the size of the site. We comply with all the setbacks and the, so I would say, you know, that we're, the site is clearly adequate for this proposed project in terms of size. The compatibility of the proposed structure with neighboring properties. Well, we are the big boy on the block and that's not going to change. But I think the addition of the porches will actually have a tendency to bring the apparent height of the building down. So we think that the changes we propose actually do make the building more compatible in terms of size. The extended proposed increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure, well, you know, we're just increasing the building coverage a little bit. And, but again, most of the changes, most of the increases in building coverage don't have any mass because they're basically a porch roof or a covered entrance. The suitability of the site, again, where there are no wetlands nearby, it's a level lot. We don't anticipate there'll be any change in the stormwater runoff or any impact on neighboring properties. Impact of scale, siding, and mass on neighborhood's visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. We believe that, you know, we're not changing anybody's views or vistas, but we believe the streetscape will be enhanced with the addition of these porches. So we think that, you know, that's a net positive for the neighborhood. Compatibility of proposed use with neighboring uses. You know, the Cyrus Kent House has been an inn for a long, long time. And it's great, it's great that it's going to be converted to a single-family residence. So it'll actually be, you know, more compatible than the previous uses. It's on the town sewer. There'll be a reduction in traffic flow because the, you know, the previous iteration here, it's been rented out to Chatham Bazin for staff housing. So we think, you know, there's going to be substantial reduction in traffic flow and safety. And then the noise and litter, again, we think to the extent, if it was a problem, there won't be a problem any longer. And clearly, you know, the Campbell family is not going to be littering around. So we think that there'll be a net positive there as well. And the, you know, the building's been there a long time. And so we think the adequacy of the utilities and other public services are clear. So that would be our presentation.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this? If so, please indicate to Sarah now that you would like to be recognized.
I see no one in the audience that wishes to speak in favor of the application.
Okay, I'll read the correspondence that I have, which I don't have anything from the historical folks. But I do have something from Sharon Drone. She is the treasurer task collector stating that there's an unpaid personal property tax. Well, could be a car, could be a boat, could be anything. Sound of Chatham Board of Health, Judith Giorgio writes on 11-18. I have reviewed the plan to renovate this property. The existing dwelling is currently connected to the municipal sewer. The plans anticipated do not add any sewer flow to the property. I have no concerns. Sarah, do you have a letter from the store?
I believe they were before the Historic Commission on Tuesday. Unfortunately, we were not able to get a letter or a comment prior to it. But I do believe that the Historic Commission did not impose a demolition delay. In addition to that, we did receive an email from the tax collector that the taxes have been paid on the property.
Okay, good. Mr. Riley, could you just give us a quick one-two about what happened at the historical meeting, please?
Well, actually, I'd ask Eric Tully. Because this is going to amaze you, but managed to get through historic without a lawyer. Imagine that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Bill. The project was very well received and there were really no negative comments. It was a relatively quick and painless hearing. And we did, again, we received unanimous support from the Historic Board.
Now, Eric, did they sing kumbaya as well?
They might have done that after I logged off. Any more questions, Mr. Nixon? Where did Dave Nixon go?
It appears that his computer is frozen. Are there any board members that have any questions regarding this application?
This is Paul Sample. I have no questions.
Happy Van Sickle has no questions.
They asked people not in favor.
Yeah, Sarah, I'm back.
You're back, okay.
If there are anyone out there who wishes to speak against this project, if so, please indicate now to Sarah.
There may be one person in the audience that wishes to speak.
Robert, my phone number is 1615.
And if you can just please identify your address and your last name so I can have it on the record.
Okay, yeah, I got it. Okay, I'm back. All right, so is there anyone out there, Sarah, who wishes to speak against it?
There is, there is one member of the audience that wishes to speak. I just asked him to identify himself, first, last name, and address.
And who was the gentleman, please?
It's Robert Cushion. I have the house at 71 Cross Street, right next door.
Okay, great.
I'm not speaking against it, I just have a question. I didn't know if the property was going to be used as a residence or a rental.
No, it's going to be used as a single-family residence.
Single-family, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah, is there anyone else out there?
I see no one else that wishes to speak or has a specific question.
Okay, very good. So we'll have questions from the board. We'll start with Dennis.
Was that me, Dave?
Yeah, Dennis, do you have any questions?
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I just had one question. I was happy to see it's going to be used as a single-family residence. But what's going to happen to the structure that's known as 63A in the rear?
I don't know, maybe they'll use it as a guest house, maybe they'll use it to playhouse for the children. The, I mean, it was used for rental rooms by the inn. But obviously, they are going to be reducing the number of bedrooms on the site. So those may be the bedrooms they're using. Eric, can you answer that question?
Yes, that will constitute two of the nine total bedrooms.
Okay, so guest quarters and Dennis.
Okay, so was there, was there a kitchen and a bathroom in there and everything? Imagine.
There's no kitchen.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Dave Thompson, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. I have no questions, sir.
Megan?
I also have no questions.
Dave Veech?
Dave Veech has no questions.
Paul?
Paul Sample, no questions.
Happy?
Happy has no questions.
Buck? Buck, do you have any questions?
Did we lose Buck?
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Yes, I do have a question for Mr. Riley. I have concerns about the coverage. As I understand it, it's stated as the maximum allowable building coverage is 2,900. And the proposed project is like 51% above that. It's already above it now. And I'm wondering if Mr. Riley could explain, what is the purpose of the bylaw specifying 2,900 square foot versus just not having a building coverage? Why do we have one?
Well, the, in the first place, I'd like to point out that of course,
What time is it?
That each applicant, of course, stands as a unique set of facts. And the, so here, dealing with this large and existing building, the Campbells wanted to know, they met with Eric, what can we do to make this building more attractive? And is there anything we can do to reduce the imposing nature of the structure? And so Eric's suggestion was, well, let's do a porch roof along the front of the building that'll also give you an opportunity to have a mudroom entrance on that side. And as I indicated earlier, when you have a porch that has no mass, you know, it's just a covered porch, the, it tends to bring the building down. And so the, I always felt that building coverage, which is roofed areas, was more concerned with roofs that cover interior spaces. Because that adds mass to a structure. These roofs just Uh, these roofs just cover porches with the exception of the entrance on the Kent Place side. And, you know, they, they don't add any mass to the structure, but they do make the structure look, uh, more attractive. And so, you know, so the question, as it's supposed to be, is, uh, you know, does this change make the building substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? And the, although, uh, we are, uh, increasing the building coverage, uh, I believe that, I infirmly believe that the, uh, the changes proposed here, uh, are actually an improvement to the streetscape, uh, and, uh, make the building, you know, actually, uh, more compatible with the other structures around. Because it tends to bring it down, reduce the mass of the structure. Instead of big vertical walls, you know, you now have a roof breaking up that vertical. So, so the, uh, I think that, uh, adding porch roofs, uh, to an already, to a building that already seen building coverage, uh, you know, is not, uh, such a violation of the norm of the, of the building coverage, uh, that, uh, uh, you know, would lead someone to say, this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing, uh, building. And the, the, uh, you know, part of the problem we have here is that, you know, we created this, uh, building coverage, uh, language, uh, without regard to, you know, existing structures. They just created it. And it's, and, and between 20, between a lot, with a lot that's, between 20,000 square feet and 30,000 square feet, they picked arbitrary numbers, you know? So this is, uh, 2,900 square feet. Where did that come from? Well, they just plucked it out of the air. They said, okay, this is the number we're gonna use for, for a lot with this area, you know? Uh, so there's a little bit of, uh, nonsense that's involved in any zoning bylaw. Because you, you try to cover all areas with, with, uh, just a flat rule. So, uh, I think that, I think this is an improvement to the building. I don't think it really violates the standards, uh, of the bylaw in any way. So I hope you'll, uh, support it, Buck.
Buck, did you have any other questions?
I'm sorry. Um, no, I'm, I'm, I'm all set with the answer.
Okay, very good. Okay, uh, Paul, uh, would you, uh, make a motion to get us into deliberations, please?
Yes, this is Paul Semple. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Beach seconds.
Okay. Dave, how do you vote on that?
Uh, Beach votes yes.
Paul?
David votes yes.
Happy?
Happy, Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. So, um, let's start with, uh, well, I'll start with myself this time. I, uh, I'm not gonna vote for this. I heard what Mr. Riley said, but the fact is, the zoning is 29 square feet, 2,900 square feet. And this is gonna go up more than 1,000 square feet, of something that's way over the top anyway. So what Mr. Riley said, that this is the big boy in the block, it is the big boy in the block. And it's gonna be the gigantuan boy on the block. I hear what he says about what the roof's gonna do, but think of all the homes around there. I mean, really, how is this gonna play with this gigantic porch out front? It's just gonna make, it's just gonna make it way, way, way too big. The amassing of it, as he says, hey, we're not talking about, uh, adding rooms and all that. No, but the visual of it, to me, is way over the chart, and I cannot vote in favor of it. Uh, Dave Beach, how do you feel about this?
Um, well, I was also, when, when the first thing I'm reading the edit, seeing was the, um, amount of increased coverage gave me pause. Um, I think that aesthetically, um, much of what they're proposing is, uh, fits the building and, and helps it to look better. Uh, I, I think the, for, the porch on the front and, and, um, I think softens the, the, the look of the building from, um, uh, it, from the front. And, but I, I think that perhaps, I think there's, they've stretched a bit with, uh, cer-. I think the screen porch in the rear on the, um, uh, backside is probably fine. But I'm concerned, I think the two covered screen porches on the Kent Place side is, I, I don't know what they, whether they're really adding enough that it's of a, a benefit to the, uh, town or the streetscape. I think, you know, there's a porch on that side, and if they wrapped around and stayed, uh, you know, to the depth of that porch, perhaps. But these projection screen porches on the Kent Place side give me some pause. Uh, especially, and, and normally, and I think it all looks good, it's well-designed. But when you combine that with the 1,000 square foot or so increase in lot coverage, um, I, I'm, I have a hard time going that far.
Thank you, Paul.
Uh, this is Paul Semple. Um, I, I actually think Mr. Riley is making sense here. Uh, although it's awful difficult to understand, but, uh, in this case, um, I think that the setback of the house from Kent Place and also from Cross Street is substantial enough that adding these porches does soften the, uh, effect of the house. And, uh, given the substantial front yard on Cross Street, uh, the amount of increased coverage, uh, does not give me so much pause. It certainly did when I looked at the advertisement and saw that we were going to 4,377 square feet, uh, 2,900, uh, maximum allowed. And, y- you know, we often have problems with houses going from, uh, 15% to 17% or 18%. But that's usually a smaller lot and where there's much more impact. Um, here, I don't see that impact as being, uh, so substantial. So I think his explanation as to why we have the, uh, 2,900 square foot, uh, maximum allowed, and why we can vary from it, um, makes some sense. So in this case, um, I don't have a problem with that increased coverage.
Happy, how do you feel about them?
I agree with Paul. I'm a little concerned about all the porches. I don't see the need to have so many screen porches, particularly on Kent, on Kent's Place side. Um, you know, a screened-in porch is the best thing in the world for Cape Cod, but three of them, uh, or two of them, I think one would be plenty. But I would not oppose it. I would be, I would vote for it.
Buck, how do you feel?
Well, I've been looking at the Cyrus Kent house for over 50 years. And I always thought, just the way it is, it's a magnificent house. Um, I think there's another house over by Avis Chase. I'm not sure if it was called Red Clouds or Red Sails, but that's another beautiful house. And I don't think there're anything, a coat of paint and a little landscaping, um, would make that a beautiful house. I don't think all these additions are necessary. Um, so I'm, I'm probably gonna side with, I am gonna side with the chair on where I stand.
Dennis, what do you think of this project?
Um, well, I think it's a nice project. I, I fully concur with what Paul and what Bill Riley said. I mean, we're not building a McMansion here. We're adding, sure, adding some additions to take away from the McMansion, um, aspect of it. Um, it's a beautiful house, but I think the porches make it look even better. So, um, if I were voting, which I'm not, but I would certainly vote to support it.
Dave Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Um, I personally think that the Cyrus Kent house looks great just as it is. You can bring it down or make it smaller by having, um, some plantings, whatever. But just the sheer numbers to go, to add another, uh, 1,400 square feet is a lot. I, uh, I hate to say it, but I would vote against it.
Megan.
I have to agree with yourself. Um, I think that it seems like they're adding, I mean, I, I do think it would be attractive. Um, but it seems like, you know, adding coverage under this circumstance is not necessary and does, you know, sort of violate the rules. So I would, I would say that I would vote against it if I were voting.
Paul, would you make a motion, please?
Oh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Riley.
Uh, can I have a minute to consult with my clients? The, uh, tough to do when you're not in the same room, but, uh...
I understand.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the meeting and I'll come back. So if you wanna, if you wanna go on to the next matter, go ahead.
I, I think, uh, I think we'll wait for you. How long are you gonna be?
Just a couple of minutes.
Okay. Um, I hate to interrupt this, to be honest with you. Um, let's do some other, yeah, go ahead.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm doing this, I'm doing it as fast as I can.
No, I understand, I understand. Uh, we'll go on to two other matters. I don't want to start another application.
Mr. Nixon, would you like to review the minutes?
I...
Our last meeting.
Looking at the word minutes. I, Sarah, you read my mind. So, uh, Paul, could you give us, uh, a motion on the minutes from our last meeting?
I will move to approve the app, the minutes for our, uh, prior meeting.
David Beach seconds.
Okay. Uh, then I'll take a roll call on that. Mr. Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Paul votes yes.
Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Uh, the next...
Are, are those the minutes as amended or as presented? Because I do know there was one small change suggested, uh, by Mr. Semple.
Well, then as amended.
As amended, that's correct.
As amended, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, the next item is, uh, at this time of year, uh, Sarah and I get concerned about folks, uh, going on vacation and all that kind of stuff. Just to make sure that as we go through the winter, we know how many members we have on a particular meeting and so forth. Well, this is the new world, so I'm not too sure how worried I am about vacations. But if you know what you're going to be doing this winter, and here I'm talking about the period of time from, let's say, December 1st until May 1st. And like Dennis, usually you go away. I don't know if you're going away this year. If, if so, you know, when it is. Or, or Mr. Beach, I know, uh, a certain lady in your life likes to go to Key West. I don't know if that's what you're gonna do. So, uh, just let Sarah know about any plans that you have as of now for vacations between now and May 1st, and that would be great, okay? So...
And that is any, if that is any vacation where you would not be able to attend a virtual meeting.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Bill Riley.
Yeah. Yes.
We'd like to do, uh, a continuance for redesign purposes.
Okay. Sarah, what, what would be a good date for Mr. Riley to return?
Um, well, the question would be, he would probably have to go potentially back in front of the historical commission for their review, um, to make sure, well, maybe not, because they made it, they, they, I don't have a comment, so I don't know if they determined that the changes, that it was historically significant, but the changes did not impose a demo delay. Um, I can speak with the liaison to the commission tomorrow. I'm just wondering how much time Mr. Riley needs in order to, um, do the design changes?
Uh, not, not much, not much.
So would you be looking for potentially January 14th or January 28th or sometime later than that?
I would say January 14th.
Okay. We do have space on the agenda if that is what the board chooses to do.
Uh, how often does the historic commission meet, Sarah?
Well, the, the, uh, if I could just address that for a minute. Uh, they meet theoretically twice a month. Um, the, uh, uh, since we're gonna be, uh, actually removing things rather than adding things, uh, the, uh, the meeting with the conserva, with the historic commission would be kind of a pro forma meeting. I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about that. Uh, you know, we're, we're trying to get back in front of them before we come back to you, but, uh, I, I wouldn't worry about that. I think, I think it's appropriate for you to act without hearing from them, because if they don't approve it, we, you know, we can't go forward anyway, so... But obviously, what we're gonna be doing is re, is re, reducing or removing screen porches. So I can't imagine that that kind of change is gonna, uh, uh, be something that the historical commission's concerned about.
Mr. Nixon, I, I do agree with Mr. Riley. And I believe if he did need to file a new application with the commission, he could get something in there relatively quickly to be heard before, um, our January 14th meeting.
Okay. Very well. Okay, Paul, would you make a motion on the request for continuance, please?
Yes, this is Paul Semple. I'll move to grant the requested continuance to January 14th, 2021.
David Beach seconds.
Okay. Uh, uh, how do you vote, Mr. Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Semple votes yes.
Uh, Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous decision. Thank you very much, Mr. Riley.
Uh, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Sarah, 20-071, please.
Hey, application number 20-071, Joseph and Karen Cattori, care of Larry, Larry Broody, P.O. Box 92, Harwichport, Mass. 02646. Owner of property located at 144 Pleasant Street. Also shown on the town of Chatham's accessories, map 2C Block 56, Lot 16. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a conforming lot via the demolition of portions of the dwelling and the construction of additions. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and it is located 16.7 feet from the road, where a 25-foot setback is required, and 3.7 feet from the northerly border. The proposed addition will be non-conforming, and that it will be located 3.7 feet from the northerly border, where a 15-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,569 square feet, and the proposed building coverage is 2,667 square feet, where 29, 2, 2,950 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot contains 25,538 square feet in the R20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master and Law, Chapter 48, Section 6 and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Okay, uh, Mr. Broody.
Yes, how are you?
Well, great. Your floor is yours.
Um, Sarah, thank you for giving all the wonderful stats and whatnot. Um, in a matter, for a matter of efficiency, um, I won't go through them again. So essentially, what we are proposing is the demolition and reconstruction of the rear section of the existing dwelling. Um, and as Sarah mentioned, it currently sits at a 3.7-foot setback on the northerly boundary. And we're looking to maintain that, um, sideline setback with no additional encroachment. Um, the addition will be slightly bigger, um, than the existing, uh, and it will extend, uh, towards the middle of the yard, um, or middle of the property on the southerly side, um, with the majority of it not even visible from the street. Um, so that's essentially the relief we're looking for. Um, would you like me to run through the criteria real quick?
Yes, please, yes, please.
Adequacy of the, um, site. Um, obviously, the site is pretty large. It's over 25,000 square feet, uh, most of it not being used in the rear of the property. Um, we intend to clear, um, a portion of it and maintain a, you know, a decent buffer between the, uh, rear neighbor and, um, the, uh, proposed pool and garage. Um, we're staying below the, um, building coverage for the site, um, and no new non-conformities will be, uh, created. Compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, um... Um, it's similar in size and mass to, um, the, the rest of the properties. We're in the neighborhood. We're keeping the front portion of the house, um, as it is historic, and historic has approved these changes. Extend of the proposed increase in non-conformity, um, there will be none. Everything else as proposed will meet setbacks, coverage, et cetera. Um, suitability of the site, um, as you can see by the, the plan, and if you went out there, it's pretty much flat. So there'll be little impact to neighboring properties, runoff, and, um, there's no wetlands or groundwater issues. Size, scale, sitting and mass of the neighborhood. Once again, we're, uh, keeping the historic front portion of the building and mirroring all the architectural elements throughout the addition and the proposed garage. Compatibility of proposed use, it's gonna be residential family home, um, just like the rest in the neighborhood. No intention of renting or, um, yeah, it's just gonna be a family home. Uh, adequacy of sewage disposal, water, um, there's a septic system on site and it's on town water, so that should be fine. Traffic flow and safety, see little, uh, impact on that. The driveway will be big enough so cars can turn around and not have to back out onto Pleasant Street. So that should be, uh, there's a small turnaround now, so we'll try to maintain that. Noise and litter, uh, once again, it'll be a family home, so, um, I don't suspect there'll be any, uh, trash issues. And adequacy of utilities, public services, there's gas on the property, public water. So all of those seem, uh, adequate for the work proposed. So that, that's what I have.
Very good. I thank you. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application, please so indicate on the screen now so that Sarah can recognize.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor of the application.
Okay, I will read the correspondence first. This is from Sharon Drone. She, again, is our treasurer tax collector here in the Town of Chatham. She states that there is unpaid real estate tax on 144 Pleasant Street.
Mr. Chair, that the taxes have been paid, so that letter is no longer valid.
Okay. Then we have a note from Michelle Clark. She writes, "The applicant was before the Historical Commission on October 20th, 2020, seeking approval for a partial demolition of the subject structure. After review of the information provided, the commission determined that the structure is historically significant due to its age and architectural features. The commission also found that the proposed work will not materially diminish the historical significance of the structure, and therefore did not impose a demolition delay. The application was also subject to discretionary review for determination of substantial alteration to a contributing structure in an eligible National Historic Registered District. Commission members determined that the information presented does not substantially alter the structure and did not find a discretionary referral to the Cape Cod Commission was necessary." Then we have a note from Judith Giorgio, health agent for the town on 11/18. She writes, "I have reviewed the plan to add an addition, renovate. Plan includes a full house, which will meet the Board of Health definition of a bedroom. This adds septic flow to the property and will be, will be required approval by the Board of Health in accordance with the Board's nitrogen loading regulation." That's the end of the correspondence. Is there anybody in the audience who has a specific question, who would like to speak against this application? If so, please indicate now so Sarah can recognize.
I see no one that wishes to speak in opposition or has a specific question.
Okay, we'll have questions from the board. Megan, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions yet.
Dave Thompson?
I have no questions at all, Mr. Nixon.
Dennis?
Uh, Dennis Sullivan, no questions.
Buck?
Buck has no questions.
Happy?
Happy has no questions.
Paul?
Paul has no questions.
Are you sure?
I'm sure.
All right, Dave Beach?
Uh, Beach has no questions.
And I have none. Okay, uh, Paul, a motion, please.
This is Paul Semple. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Beach seconds.
Okay, we have to vote on that, Mr. Beach?
Uh, Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, deliberations. Let's start with Mr. Thompson.
Uh, Mr. Thompson thinks that it's a, a great idea. It looks great. Um, been down there. No, uh, no qualms at all.
Uh, Dennis Sullivan, if I were voting, I certainly would vote in favor of it. Meets all our criteria and it's a nice project.
Buck?
Buck would support it. Meets all our criteria. Very nice looking project.
Happy?
Great project. I support it.
Paul?
Yes, this is certainly, this is Paul Semple. This is certainly not more detrimental, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, so I'll support it.
Dave Beach?
I, I agree with all previous.
Megan?
I would support the project as well.
And I would also. Okay, a motion, please, Paul, and the question of conditions. Do we need anything other than the usual?
I don't see any need for additional, uh, conditions. I would move to approve the application as submitted with our standard conditions.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may I just chime in on that? The, um, site seems, uh, large enough to be able to handle summertime work down in that neighborhood, and I would ask that the condition of, of exterior summertime work be, uh, considered.
Well, I'll, I'll answer from my perspective. The summertime down in that area, the place is, you know, with what goes on on the water and the structures and the businesses there, I, I just, I just can't see allowing exterior construction during the summer. That's to myself speaking. The others, uh, how do you feel, Dave Beach?
Well, it's definitely a, um, densely congested area. But I also, um, try to not to go overboard in limiting summer construction. In this case, I think I could support allowing exterior summer construction.
Paul?
So Paul Semple, I think I would still stick with our standard, uh, construction restrictions.
Happy?
Well, the thing is, in that area in South Chatham, there are an awful lot of people that come and rent houses and cottages and enjoy the beaches, and I think for them to have construction going on in the summer when they pay dearly to be there, I think I would still impose our regular restrictions.
Buck?
I support our regular conditions.
Dennis?
Well, if I were voting, I would, I would support the regular conditions also.
Dave Thompson?
Um, if I was voting, I would vote, uh, not to impose these, uh, restrictions.
Megan?
I would vote not to impose the restrictions as well.
Okay, so what we have, uh, of the folks that have a vote, uh, four feel that the restrictions should stay as they are, one does not. Uh, Dave Beach, are you willing to change your vote on that or no?
Oh, I, I, I would, I would vote, uh, it, with the, uh, with the other members on that. I, uh, I don't feel that strongly.
Okay, okay, Paul, uh, then would you make a motion for a vote, please?
Yes, I'll, I will move to approve the application as submitted with our standard conditions.
David Beach seconds.
Okay, then we'll vote on that. Uh, Dave Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Happy?
Happy, yes.
And I vote yes. So that's a unanimous vote, five zero.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I, I, I don't think I got to vote.
Oh, well, I checked you off.
Well, okay. But just in case anybody wanted to know, I support it.
Well, I thought you did. I thought I heard you whisper that. Okay, like I said, that was a unanimous vote, five zero. Uh, thank you, Mr. Broody.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, let's go on to 20-072.
20-072 Eleanor M. Christie Living Trust, care of Vincent Smith, P.O. Box 224, Marston's Mills, Mass. 0264, 02648, owner of property located at 41 Court Street, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 12I Block 24K, Lot H11. The applicant proposes to install an exterior mechanical system appliance generator 13 feet from the westerly butter, where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed general, generator will be located next to an existing AC condenser. The lot contains 30,230 square feet in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Master and Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 8D2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Mr., uh, Smith, I believe, Mr. Smith?
Yes, can you hear me?
Well, you certainly can.
Okay, good. Um, well, do I have the floor?
Yes, you do, and I don't think you have to spend a lot of time on this. Just kind of explain to us why it should go where you wish to put it.
Okay, thank you for the opportunity granted to me by Eleanor Christie to speak with you today. She resides at 41 Court Street where the generator is to be installed. At this residence she resides, she is living under a few hardships that I'd like to mention in her words. I have people in day and night to take care of me. I cannot walk and, uh, would have to sell the home and move to a nursing home. So these are three notes she asked me to share with you. Well, on her behalf, she may feel this generator is critical to have to stay in her home during power outages and maintain the full-time care she needs to stay there. To help with your decision in the criteria, I have presented two letters from the immediate neighbor, Mr. and Mrs. Malouf, and also neighboring Mr. and Mrs. Lichy, both expressing no opposition to the location of the generator. Also in your possession is the site plan with the location of the generator, setback distances proposed, uh, next to three air conditioners like Sarah mentioned. And I have also submitted the generator manufacturer specs showing installation distances to meet state and local codes. So may this be sufficient enough for your decision, and I, I thank you for your consideration.
Okay, we thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application? If so, please indicate on the screen now so that Sarah can recognize.
I see no one that wishes to speak in favor.
Then I'll read the correspondence. On 11/18, Judith Giorgio, uh, health agent wrote, "I have reviewed the plan to vary the sideline setback requirement for the exterior mechanical appliances generator at this property. I have no concerns about the proposal." Then we have a note, this is from Jay Briggs. He is our building commissioner. He writes on November 19th, "Based on updated mechanical specs provided by the applicant, it appears he can meet the 13-foot setback as advertised." I say appears because we do not have a current site plan, but rather the new exterior mechanicals were added by hand to a certified plot plan by a registered land surveyor dated 11/29/1994." Then, we have a letter from, uh, this is from Dee Terrence and Susan Lichy, L-I-C-H-T-Y. They write on November 3rd, "My wife Susan and I hereby state our approval of the application. Where better to put the new generator than beside the existing AC condenser?" And then we have a lot of, letter from Louis and Carol Malouf there at, uh, 29 Court Street in North Chatham. They write on October 3rd, "We are butters to 41 Court Street. Uh, Mrs. Christie has informed us that the generator's planned for installation at 41 on the north side of the house, near the border to our property. We have no objection to the generator's placement there. Please contact us if you wish to discuss this further." And that is the extent of the correspondence. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either against this or has a specific question? If so, please indicate now to Sarah.
There is no one else in the audience.
I see, okay. There you go. All right, uh, questions from the board. Dennis?
Uh, Dennis Sullivan, no, I have no questions.
Buck?
Buck has no questions.
Happy?
No questions from Happy.
Paul?
Uh, I, this is Paul Semple. I certainly support this, but I, the question I have is, are you going to be able to maintain the distances you need to from windows with respect to this generator?
Yes, I, uh, I am gonna maintain the distances because it's gonna be far enough away, five feet from that window.
Okay, that's what I was not clear about. When you talk about being within 18 inches of the building, I wasn't sure how you were gonna be five feet from the window.
Yeah, the Mass General law says I can't be 18 inches. I have to be at least three feet off a combustible structure. I could locate it less if it was to be cement or brick, but when it's up against shingles, you have to maintain the, at least the three feet. And I'm gone with the metal enclosure for that reason. If it was a composite enclosure, you would have to go five feet from combustible. So that's how I'm gonna maintain that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Dave Thompson?
Uh, no questions, sir.
Okay, uh, Megan?
I have no questions.
Did I forget you, Dennis?
Dennis?
Nope, nope, I had no questions officially.
All right, well, all right, there we go. Well, I don't have any here. All right, Paul?
This is Paul Semple. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Beach seconds.
Okay, uh, we have to vote on that. Uh, Dave Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Happy?
Happy, yes.
Buck votes yes.
You didn't mean let me ask you.
Well, I wanted to help you out.
I vote yes, okay. Oh, my goodness. So deliberations. Buck, we'll start with you.
I have no problem approving this. It certainly is not detrimental to the neighborhood.
Dennis?
Yeah, if I were voting, I certainly would vote in favor of it. It's not a problem.
Dave Thompson?
I would vote in favor, sir.
Megan?
I would absolutely vote in favor.
Uh, Dave Beach?
Uh, yes, uh, meets all of our criteria and is not substantially more detrimental.
Paul?
Uh, I agree, Paul Semple. I agree with Mr. Beach.
And Happy?
I agree, and I'm thrilled that Ellie can stay in her home.
Okay, so Paul, can we have a motion, please?
Yes, this is Paul Semple. I'll move to approve the application as submitted. I don't see any need for conditions.
David Beach seconds.
All right, uh, so voting, Dave Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Sample votes yes.
Happy?
Happy, yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
And I vote yes. That's a unanimous vote. Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Smith, five zero. I don't believe that we have any further business. I think we took care of the minutes. We took care of the vacation. I'm simply gonna say happy Thanksgiving to everybody and, uh, keep safe. So, uh, we need to close the meeting via verbal confirmation from everybody. And Sarah, I see the time is 5:24. I don't know what you have, but it's probably closer than that.
I have 5:24 as well.
All right, so closing the meeting, uh, Dave Beach? All right, so closing the meeting, Dave Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Paul?
Semple votes yes.
Happy?
Happy votes yes.
Buck?
Buck votes yes.
Dennis?
Dennis Sullivan votes yes.
Dave Thompson?
Dave Thompson votes yes. Thank you.
And Megan?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes. And again, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, and see you in two weeks. Sarah?